I like that idea because if we do set it on per paper, it will be so miniscule. It'll be lost.
It's gonna cost you more to write the check, write the paper for the check.
Well, they're not small payments, so.
Yeah, good point. And I agree, Mr. Reed, my opinion matters. Silly to do $2,000.
That wasn't every sentence.
Yeah, it's taken.
Oh, that's exactly what I'm doing.
Okay.
Can you think of that statute?
Sure, sure.
All those in favor of paying it at the end of the year and along some supplement, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to encumbrances. And can somebody, do we need to take these one at a time, or procedurally, I need a little.
You can certainly do them all unless somebody wants to pull one out as you've done before on consents. So you could have a motion to approve them all if that's the way. Where's it going?
I did check them all out. The only one I had a question on is this period court line. And that's just because they wanted paid ahead and then he put in a different number. I didn't know whether, I think we've got a copy of that.
I.
I didn't know which figure to put in there.
You've got $2,212.
You should have had a, via email, you received a copy of all the encumbrances. So you should have had a explanation.
So if there's no questions on any of the last, you could approve them all except the last.
Motion to approve all but the last encumbrance by Paul Ryder, seconded by Ethan Brown.
Is the rate come exactly $60,000?
That was approved, that's why it was on there. Again, we have paid for it.
Is that the repeater?
Yes.
I believe it came in lower. Are we done? What's the one we're talking about now?
Rate on the first one.
It was $60,000.
Right.
It was $60,000.
But that's what the original amount was.
That's the additional. I'm sorry, go ahead.
That was what was approved.
Forty-one even.
Forty-one, one, forty-one, I believe is the extended amount that we had received.
Would you appropriate for us to approve more than half received?
I'm just saying.
Well.
Or would it stay in the?
I'm just saying, like, by definition, an encumbrance is something for which there is a receipt. It's according to bill.
Yeah, you're right.
And we're approving more than the bill. This procedurally seems incorrect. If we know exactly the number, then I think absolutely I have to do it.
The exact number's right down there in the Motorola repeaters.
What's the $60,000?
Yeah, $60,000 was what was originally approved last year. And then that's the invoice that I got.
So you don't need the first one?
So you don't need the six?
I don't need the sixty. The $34,121.
Thank you, Mike.
We'll hope up the first and the last.
Yeah.
To amend, like, to just the first, except for the first and the last.
Uh, sure. Yeah, he's seconded.
Yeah, Josh seconded, corrected.
Yeah, so because it was amended. Ethan, Paul Ryder, Josh. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor of approving all encumbrances except the first one listed and the last one listed on this month's agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, that motion passes seven zero.
And I think the minutes will reflect the first one has been completely deleted, the $60,000.
Mrs. Loomis Cabinet Board was, saw that bill, did you see it? They had a prepayment due $1,300, that's why it's up $9,1250. The whole bill was $2,1250. So did you see that on your?
What are you talking about, from this?
So motion to approve the $22,12.50 per period court, this Loomis Cabinet.
You need to look at the bill first.
Well, I mean, we need to pay the whole bill anyway, right?
No.
Prepayment, so you just want us to pay the prepayment?
We can't pay for it.
Nothing has been paid on that.
So we should change it to?
The whole balance is due upon receiving the invoice. We received the invoice as of December 28th. It's the only way the project can be completed. But I wasn't comfortable signing it until there was funds due.
I sent out the invoices to you last month of this.
I, I don't have.
What's the problem?
It's Tuesday.
He just said he has to have all the funds to get it paid.
Josh.
Okay, I, I just saw the minutes, I didn't see the encumbrances.
In the encumbrances attachment.
I just want to make sure I'm not getting something. I found proof, I said I looked at all of them, this one I was confused.
Is that the amount, $22,1250?
$22,1250.
You need that paid for them to?
To do a complete audit, that's right. There's not enough money to do the prepayment for them to start, and so I wasn't going to start it if I couldn't finish it.
Is that what I just always say? Ethan. I make a motion to approve the $22,12.50 paid invoice for the Cabinet.
Hold on a second. I thought the writing was.
Is this invoice sufficient to approve an encumbrance when it specifies a prepayment due?
Judge, can I get some clarification? Have you?
Sure.
Okay, I'm sorry, can you get, or can you come up here so we have you on the?
Sure.
All right, so I think this is semantics just because of how the vendor is making their bill out, but.
Right.
So you have, you had some work done, is it?
No work has been done.
No, no work is done?
There's not enough money to pay to, I do not have $1,300 in collection for this year to start that money, so I was not going to sign it and approve the work until the encumbrance was approved, so that I knew that we could pay it with the funds from there. You remember, I think we transferred somewhere around $3,900 for the furniture and fixtures account, makes some other conservative view. We could not come close to doing the things we wanted to do for $3,900. So he redrafted the, kept the jury top box one down to $22,12. And initially, it was $2,400 something, so we're stuck with just that. So that's what, but there's, no work has been done on this part yet.
So you, you received this bill on the 28th, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay.
We're sort of there after.
But, so what they were asking you to do is pay $1,300 immediately and then the other $900 and something was due in thirty days?
At a minimum.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, at a minimum.
It just, okay, that's fine.
He actually asked.
We don't, we just don't prepay bills. I mean, so he can, he can put that on there all he wants, we're just not going to do it.
Yeah.
So it's fine. Thank you. So is there a motion on the floor?
There is, and for the $22,12.
It's, it's clear to me, I mean, it's not clear, but I mean, the invoice is not clear, but it's, I think procedurally clear. And it was received before the.
All right.
Who had the motion?
Motion by Tracy Martin, was there a second?
I seconded.
Scott, here's seconded to approve this encumbrance for $2,212.50. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, motion passes seven zero. Okay, we do have some additionals that were advertised back on February 1st. We can go through these one at a time, we can approve them in a long sum, we can do whatever the body decides.
Motion to approve all?
You talked about all?
Yeah, all right, let's, let's go.
Did they retract their motion?
I'll retract. Okay. Yeah, motion retracted, we'll go through these one by one. So the first one is adult probation. And this was something that we discussed last month, which I think, Josh, was your recommendation that it come out of the appropriate line item.
Right, and now it's in 20, this is advertised in 2101, adult supplemental probation.
And this is all that's coming through?
Adult supplemental probation. It, it was not put in the budget that we approved for 2023. And it couldn't be advert, we couldn't approve it because they had to put it in there, they had put it in County General, it wasn't approved in County General, so that's why it has to be approved as advertising.
More than the half that is in joint courts.
Yeah, so this is, this is including a.
This was that split, right?
Ten percent raise possibly.
It's half in joint courts and half in.
Yeah, but the, but the number, the 32705.
What's the number in joint?
Twenty, twenty-eight, nine, sixty-five. Which was what was appropriated and approved at budget time. Hold on a second. So I think. Twenty-eight, nine, sixty-five. Is half of fifty-seven, nine, thirty.
This can be a full-time position, position now?
It's an existing position. Where, where is the salary ordinance for this? It's lost. But shouldn't there be a?
Half of this in joint courts really?
Looking for the 2101.
So where is the 32,705?
Because they included a percentage raise, a ten percent raise.
So where is that on the salary ordinance?
It's, it's not, that's what I'm saying. She's asking where the raise is in the salary ordinance, and I said it's not there.
It's, it's, it's in the salary ordinance today.
Correct, what's it on?
And it's line 268.
How about this in joint courts, the other part is in adult probation, adult 2101.
Line 269.
Right, so the question is, that line doesn't match the 32.
Correct, what I'm saying is, we don't need to approve the 32, we need to approve the 28.
That's, that's my, that's my thought as well. I'm trying to suggest that 32705 was including a ten percent raise, and it's not reflected in the salary.
Correct.
Right. We're saying the same thing.
Yeah.
So fifty-seven, nine, thirty is your total?
Correct.
So we're not approving the 32705.
I mean, that's.
It would be twenty-eight, nine, sixty-five. So where did the ten percent raise come in at?
When I asked, I asked Karen yesterday, Karen, this circuit court. I couldn't get a jive with paperwork that Justin Shately gave us for probation salaries that are, you know, they're told how many years you have. You have a master's degree in whatever, and I could not get it to match. She said she put in, she was asked to put in half from joint courts and to advertise it again from joint courts, and I said, well, our paperwork says adult probation. And she said she added ten percent to that amount. Like everybody else had at budget time, and that's how much she did, she just did what she did at budget time.
This, and we know, and now that obviously is not approved, the state mandated two rates for them was, I think, five percent or something. But there's that salary for that position, my statute required it to be fifty-seven, nine, thirty. Ten percent, if you talk about the ten percent, that would have been sixty-one, seventy, half of sixty-one, seventy, you can't do 32705. So I don't know if, where that comes from, but I know that she was not, she's not fully funded. And so June time, I've got an employee who's stressed out.
And on that budget, though, it did say budget and earning additional, so.
Right.
So I move to approve the adult probation additional at twenty-eight, nine, sixty-five.
Second, what'd you say, twenty-eight?
Nine, sixty-four.
And this is Friday times two years, what?
So that should be around that.
Right, the motion is to approve. The motion is to approve 28, nine, sixty-five by Josh Blue, seconded by Ethan Brown. Any other questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes seven zero. All right, the next one is E911.
Do you want to come up and kind of tell them, introduce yourself, and tell them where you're at and where you're at with this?
I'll listen to you all, so soon I have to take over this position. But my request for the additional is for an attempt to bring our CAD annual software maintenance fee up to date. Because it's being paid late, it's being paid late for a year, so we fall a year behind due to previous threat of not paying at all. So I have asked for an additional for the $21,059 to make up for my encumbrance, the $4,00941. Because the total bill is $26,325, which I just paid in February for last year. And they were okay with us paying it this year late, but they'd like it to become back up to date if possible.
And I had met with him and went over this and just to catch them back up and really need this to, in order to replace, to pay.
Can I replace to encumber him?
Well, he, he encumbered the one invoice because it was so late. And then he's trying to get an additional now to sit, so we won't be behind again this year. Because they don't want to wait till the end of the year.
Yeah, the invoice, it's invoice on December 1st, we'll do on the 11th of December or the same year. And what had happened was, the director previous to the one I took over for just decided not to pay it at all. So we have been taking out the next year's budget and we're probably falling a year behind.
Okay.
Motion approved.
All right, so we've got a motion to approve E911 additional in the amount of $21,059 by Ethan Brown, seconded by Tracy Martin. So I do have a question. This additional will pay 2023's invoice?
Yes.
That won't be due until December?
Right.
Okay.
Yes, that's what I'm attempting to do. Because the director previous to me paid the one that wasn't paid out of last year's budget and never asked for additional. So I paid the one for last year out of this year's budget.
Okay.
So I want to be able to catch it up this year so it's up to date, but then it actually would fit into our.
Yeah, I mean, understood.
That budget is so tight that there's no way.
So this, we've, well, actually, this, um, it has been very unclear for a number of years. What you have, what it costs, and what's, it's like, it's like this, I guess. And it is just, I, I spent countless hours over there trying to get my head wrapped around it and probably understood it for about a minute. But the whole, I mean, this is good for the council, but the whole business model, excuse me, of electronic equipment has changed. It used to be you spent a big bucket of money and you got the equipment and it lasted until it didn't work anymore. And now it's more into, really, the equipment is a smaller component and where they snare you is with the software. And so you have to pay these maintenance agreements so that the equipment continues to work. We were told, I mean, we were told many times, oh, this is what it costs, not told what the update was. And the vernacular was, I mean, we don't do this for a living, right? So like, all of these acronyms and pieces and parts are very confusing. So if you could help us by just saying, this is everything that we have, this is everything that we need, this is what it costs new, this is what it costs on an ongoing basis so that we can begin to do a better budget, because we've set aside monies for the next time, you know, to make sure that we didn't get in the same situation where we were last time, where we had a $500,000 expense or whatever it was and no money in the bank to pay for it. So we're trying to do our job, but we don't understand, I don't understand that department well enough to be able to make good decisions. And then when we get budget requests with no context, like, nothing makes sense, so.
So I agree, Josh, I think this needs to be something that is further defined and developed for our benefit, for your department's benefit. Is this something that, we're doing an additional today, is this something that has been previously included in the budget request at budget time? Or will this increase your budget request by 20-plus thousand?
No, this was already, this was already included in my budget.
Okay.
We've just been paying it for a year and taking out of the next year's budget. And I've tried to get you everything before budget time, what we do and what programs we have and what maintenance agreements are attached. So at least get you guys up to date on what's going on.
And there's a big difference between maintenance fees and warranties.
Right.
And, and that's where we've gotten into trouble, is everybody wants to buy warranties. Well, a warranty is an insurance policy. And we may or may not want to engage in those based off of, you know, the cash that we have on hand, or, or, there's a number of metrics there. But a warranty, not purchasing or not purchasing a warranty is not material to the operation of the business. Not having your CAD up to date is material to the operation of your business. The other is just financial risk that we have to wait in terms of how we want to allocate resources.
Well, I can turn this department budget around and get you guys up to date on what's going on over there.
So I could sort of, I would love to sit down and work with you on that.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor by Ethan Brown, seconded by Tracy Martin to approve the $21,059 additional for E911 CAD system. Is there any other discussion or questions? All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, thank you.
I will add, I attended 911 meeting last Thursday, and I, listening to Brad speak about the things that he is seeing in addressing and, you know, trying to make a turnaround, I, I feel confident he will get the information on a timely basis in full spectrum of what is.
Thank you, thanks, Brad. All right, next one is EMS for 2022 Emergency Management Grants. Is this to be EMS or EMA?
It's EMA.
Okay.
Everybody confuses Doug and I, we look so much alike.
You look so much alike.
We do. This additional, this is part of the grants, the reimbursement grants I apply for. This one is the FY 2022 Emergency Management Performance Grant Competitive. And it is for the security cameras that are going down in the annex. For fifteen, seven, it's actually fifteen, seven.
It's seven, twenty-two, I just wanted to say something, I just copied and pasted this in at the bottom last night.
Okay.
And he corrected it. I did not.
Okay.
Would that, would that be a monthly call to this the basis?
Not this one, the DVR will be in the building.
Motion to approve.
Second. All right, we've got a motion to approve fifteen, seven, twenty-two by Josh Blue, seconded by Tracy Martin. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, motion carries seven zero.
Motion to approve Cameron Senior, $200,000.
All right, there's a motion to approve this $10,000 request, seconded, motion by Tracy Martin, seconded by Ethan Brown.
I just wanted to say a couple things on this. Does everybody remember, or was everybody here when we approved Burlington? We've only paid about 25% of that bill. So we paid, I believe, 5,000 and the bill was about 20,000. In this instance, we're asking, being asked to pay 10,000 of about 10,000. Or, we're paying basically the whole thing, is my understanding. So. In the, in the previous case, the town of Burlington, the township of Burlington, and the community club, maybe? Or the, yeah, I think, all participated in this. So this one feels a little different. And I don't know if it merits having a conversation with them before we approve it, to say, you know, let's, at least have them come before us and say why these other organizations are in, or, I don't know if they've been asked. I talked to Andy about this a little bit, he said they were pretty strapped, but, I mean, I, I.
So the 10, you don't know if the 10,000 is for the whole?
It, it is, I've seen the bill, it's basically $10,000.
You're saying we paid what of the money?
I think, and I'm shooting from the hip here, but I think we paid 5,000 of.
Five thousand.
Five thousand of twenty.
And there is an agreement that we made with Burlington that by helping them pay that, that the Burlington Community Center would be able to be utilized as a shelter if we needed it.
Yeah, I think this just seems a little.
We should be, we should be consistent in our.
And I'm not saying that, I mean, it could be a situation that there's just no money there, but like, this doesn't.
Can I resend my motion and have this?
I, I will say, I've been in conversation with Andy about this as well. He reiterated to me that they don't have the funds on their own to do this. I asked him to send me an email that I could reference in this meeting specifying the need, the usage, the cost. Because I would, personally, I would, I would like to see this done, I think it's a valid need. He did not send me that email. He agreed to do it, but then I haven't gotten it, so. He agreed to do it, but then I haven't gotten it, so.
You're rescinding it, don't you?
We can, we can table for next month, I can invite him to be here next month. He did, he did say to me, for what it's worth, that, you know, Camden does not. Burlington, some of these other towns have asked for other things in terms of, um, other county money and partnerships, Camden has not. So this is, this is a one-time kind of outlier request for them, which I appreciate. But.
Could they possibly also ask for some of the other, the chamber program?
That's tourism stuff.
I don't think it needs the requirements.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second. I mean, we've already got information in the computer, but people, Andy said we didn't have the money to cover it, so we didn't send it easy. So that's why I'm seconding that motion. I'm just going to come in next month and say, they don't have the money.
I think they all agree that it's very much needed for the term.
This came in front of us, we were editing initially for the, and doesn't that, that incorporated talent of Camden give some edit, please, themselves?
They did. I'm just, anyway, I'm. We do that every year.
So there's a motion on the floor to approve by Ethan Brown, seconded by Paul Ryder. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries six one. All right, um, the only other thing that's not on the agenda that I just wanted to bring up briefly, I wanted to publicly thank Scott Akasun and Melinda Rossiter for, uh, working hard on the community crossing grant and getting that approved. I had multiple conversations with Scott and, um, just really appreciate your efforts there. And I think, Melinda, you helped with some, uh, some computer stuff and login credentials and that type of thing. So, uh, just thank you for that, we really appreciate that.
Good job.
Hopefully we get approved for that.
What's that?
Hopefully we get approved.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. So, uh, if there's no other new business?
I have, I cannot do the curtsy thing because I should have checked that they are all my EDS and I'm going to. You can do them via Zoom, but. I thought they would be games.
I don't know how that works, like, do you need to work with curtsy on that to get removed, or do we as a body do that, or?
I don't know what curtsy is, so.
Well, I thought it was a grant program thing, but it's a grant program and it's head start for the schools.
And are we, we're not the appointee body for it?
We are.
We are.
Oh, we are.
So we have.
Yeah, you could resign and reappoint. Yeah.
But sometimes it requires an elected official.
These meetings are, really?
Yeah, these meetings are.
So we don't have one between now and March?
Yeah, the next one is, actually May, but. Yeah, the next one is, uh, May twenty-third. Well, and that's confusing, isn't it? That's the board, you, ones that could be, ones that would be, everyone's.
Yeah, so you probably weren't elected to the executive board, you would know if you were. So you just need to worry about the.
So there's only two more meetings, I mean, May and October then.
Okay, then we have between now and May to appoint somebody, so I think, I think we can work on that.
All right.
All right. Yeah, I think so, we can take that. Anything else?
Just real quick, I would like, um, the council would provide me with a little insight because, um, the USAF are, have been going up and CD rates are now rebound. So I need to make a decision as far as, um, investing on a cash level. And I am, so this shows you, you know, some balances when I, how do I. And the current CD rates that are being offered by the banks that have responded to being a CD rates. We also have another option, Trust Indiana, Trust Indiana is liquid. You can put money in and out on a daily basis whenever you want, so it's not tied up. I am not privy to the budget, I'm not privy, privy to, like, the spending paint plans on some of your cumulative funds. So I'm hesitant to tie up any money for, you know, nine to twelve months without, you know, being armed with that information. So I'm just looking for some guidance from you all. We'll, we'd be a little bit ahead by investing in a nine to twelve month CD. But if you look at the Trust Indiana rate, they in the past have not been as competitive as their banks where, where I've had the money held. But, uh, Trust Indiana, here's a little, uh, investing, making some better decisions as far as investing, so their rates are more competitive.
It's because of the liquidity.
Right, but with Trust Indiana, they, the rates for Trust Indiana will fall slower than the banks do, so. It's kind of, kind of six of, you know, one half dozen the other, whether you go with Trust Indiana or with a nine to twelve month CD. But I don't know what's coming up, but, you know, if you're looking at some unexpected major expenses, jail, with money trial, so and so forth.
I would opt for a nine-month, if I was to be, I'm not much on fluctuating industries. That wouldn't understand the Trust Indiana's fluctuation?
Yeah, but, I mean.
Yeah, but if, if the Fed rate, what's expected and what's predicted is for the Fed rates to go up another quarter percent in March and maybe another quarter percent in June and top out around five percent. So Trust Indiana, they believe that they will hit that five percent and maybe a little higher, but then it's going to drop. So that's all prediction, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, Trust Indiana is kind of like the gold standard across the state, where most people park their money.
So there. I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time, uh, giving some traction on this conversation. There's, there's, there's a finance board that reviews this, correct?
They, they're the board of finance, yes, but they are, are not familiar with, well, my question to you all really is, what's, you expect your expense for the rest of the year? The, the cash balance has never been an issue, but you all know what's coming this fiscal year, setting the budget and that, so that's why it came to you.
Okay.
That's, that's a fair point, because there's ten million dollar cash out that's coming down the pipe here, so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to tie up ten million dollars for twelve months and then regret it.
So, just for a little context.
Trust Indiana, you can put it in one day and bring out the next.
For context, for every million dollars, on an annualized basis, you're only talking about five thousand dollars of revenue. Of, of interest, so.
One, what?
The difference between Trust Indiana and the highest CD rate.
Four forty-nine.
Right, so I mean.
Right, so being able to move money in and out, that was probably what I was.
Is a premium at twenty-twenty-three, from a cash management perspective, but I would say as much money into that out of checking as is feasible
That's what I was leaning towards, but.
To, to maintain liquidity to, on a month-to-month basis, which, I mean, is a significant.
There's value to that, yes.
Significant.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
Especially given the, the velocity at which you can move money.
That's all I.
Yeah, so, I mean, so the short answer to your question, I, from my perspective is liquidity is at a premium this year. So I wouldn't tie anything up in a CD at this time.
Yep.
For the, for the minor incremental revenue.
Thanks for that, thanks.
I would like a, a quick update on Carol Manor and where we're at and how things are going.
Um, like.
I mean, just a quick, just a quick.
I would like to have that on the agenda, uh, so that we have, uh, some context around it and some preparation for that. I don't know what a quick update is. What are you, what are you looking for?
I'm just looking how things are, are, how things are going and if she's, I mean, after our last meeting, we left her with nothing, yeah, so. Just information. Okay? I mean, if, if it's putting you on the spot, you don't have to.
Oh, I was prepared to be asked, so, I mean, I'm fine.
Short version.
Short version.
Sure.
But I would like to be on the agenda. Census, uh, we did have one that went to the nursing home that now, so we lost one when I was fourteen. Portage Manor up in South Bend, uh, the director called me, they were closing. Um, they got a hundred and five R cap residents, which, um, of the state. Uh, me and Jennifer, um, Brower from Howard County Home, her taking a trip up to South Bend to assess their residents to see how many we can get, um, her for her home and us for Carol Manor, see who, you know, we can take, they have some more, I guess, mentally disabled ones, but make sure that we can take care of them in Carol Manor. Um, they would just be transfers, they, there would be no laps in payments, so that stuff will blow over and be quickly withdrawn in revenue. Um, but they just got wind that they're being closed, so, um, looking into that. And we have a core directors that we've been trying to start, so we've got people, we don't have all of them on there, but we're doing advertising, taking care of pamphlets, business cards, um, planning an open house for April. Um, and getting the word out that I'm, you know, in charge of my business cards being made, um, and that kind of thing, so.
How are the quarters going?
Uh, we're about the same, I have some that are getting ready to start because we will need the employees if we do bring in more people and fill that place up. And to that way cut back and make sure nobody's going over an hour, so, um, I've actually got three people that are having interviews with HR who, um, already did and starting today in LBN. So I'm trying to, to make sure that we're qualified, have the qualified people in there and doing all that.
If the place in South Bend, you said a hundred plus residents, what's the reason for that?
It was going to take seventeen million dollars to renovate their building and they don't want that kind of money. So, I mean, I guess it's been back and forth for years and they just, it, it got out that the council was closing them and I don't want them there, and that was their second phone call that they made, letting us know they have residents for the trying place.
So you say you're putting together a board, what do you want to tell?
I'd like to have a, a family member, you know, that knows the resident, of the residents, not, you know, um, a, a doctor or a nurse practitioner, um, I'd like to get in the journey, I'd like to have, you know, um, a business owner from Hill County be part of it. I mean, we have trustees and stuff like that, so people that, that Carol Manor is, is their interest and to take some stuff off of my plate. Yes, and, and so that's what we've been doing is asking some people.
I, I, I have a question. I mean, there was a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar boo-boo here, we can't address, so what are we going to do?
Don't understand the question.
Well, I mean, we, we were just advised today that we are going to be four hundred and fifty thousand dollars short of our promise in our cap stack. So as of this very moment, we can't pay for the jail, we have to figure out how we're going to pay for the jail.
Those are strong, very strong. We do not, not build a jail for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
We committed a cap stack that doesn't, no longer exists.
Exactly.
Okay, so we.
So we need to find where to pull the, the.